Let's call the workstation for the October 31st board meeting to order. First round of agenda will be the pledge. Led tonight by board member.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda? And the consent agenda? Is there anything on the agenda or the consent agenda you would like to talk about or change? Okay. Move right along. Next. Be the visitors and tonight we have Ms. Laura Schlessinger. Would like to talk to us about her, uh... I believe she's got some signatures as far as...
Smyrna West Alternative School Teacher and Rutherford Education Association President-Elect, Laura Schlessinger. 714 West Main Street, Murfreesboro 37129. Good afternoon. On behalf of the teachers of Rutherford County Schools pursuant to Section 495605 of the Professional Educators Collaborative Conferencing Act of 2011, I come before you to present the signatures of 751 certified teachers, which more than satisfies the 15% of all RCS certified teachers required to initiate the process of interest-based collaboration in order to discuss with the Rutherford County Board of Education areas of mutual concern to all teachers. Accompanying these signatures is a letter requesting in writing a vote to exercise the right to engage in collaborative conferencing in matters relating to salary, wages, insurance, fringe benefits, working conditions, leave, payroll deduction, and grievance procedures. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter. We look forward to hearing from you so that we may proceed accordingly and in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Erlock, well, we've got recognitions next.
Okay.
But we'll worry about that tomorrow night, I guess.
We can do that. I don't know if she'll be here. Is that correct? She won't be here, but... Okay, so we might want to just recognize them.
Okay, go around the weeks.
All right. Excellence in Partnership Award. Rutherford County Board of Education was presented with the Excellence in Partnership Award by the Prevention Coalition for being dedicated and committed partner in the advancement of evidence-based prevention throughout Rutherford County, Tennessee. This is a result of our part... Uh, this is a result of our partnership with ERFI, the Rutherford County Health Department, and the alcohol and drug prevention programs being used in our schools. And Ms. Stensel, I think, was a very, uh... involved with this coming to fruition. And we thank her. She couldn't be here tonight, or I think she may be out for the next few days. Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. Okay, number eight.
Request to name the turf field at Blackman High School. Dr. Lisa Justice, Principal of Blackman High School, would like to name the turf field, uh, which when installed, be named Bart Smith Field. Mr. Smith was a longtime supporter in the Blackman community.
Dr. Justice, would you like to say anything?
Yes. A chance to see the letter that our residents supported this, but Coris' life is here and, um... I think the thing that those who knew Bart Smith, there's one paragraph in it that will describe him as a perfectionist, community center of kind and caring. When a job was to be done, he wanted to make sure it was done right. It had lasting impact. Right. It had lasting impact on facilities as well. He's 20-year police officer with DPD, 20 years with the Sheriff's Department, and he was already also a 40-plus-year bus contractor and bus driver. So, just, he's done a lot for our community and we feel like this is a small way, um, to recognize that. So, thank you for considering.
Thank you. Okay. Uh... Any board members have any questions? Or anybody? Okay. We'll move right along. Financial matters.
Segal High School Band Booster Club Raffle 2019. Segal High School Band Booster requests school board permission to apply with the Tennessee Secretary of State for permission to conduct a lottery in the fall of 2019. If approved, raffle tickets will be sold at the price of $10 each. The total price amount will be, uh, $2,500. The drawing will be held at Segal High School in the fall of 2019. All purchased raffle tickets will be placed in a raffle drum. The winning ticket will be drawn by an impartial party. The winner need not be present to win. The 2018 raffle generated a profit of $5,898.06 on ticket sales totaling $8,610. Logs are maintained detailing the following: the ticket number and the number purchased; uh, name, address, phone number, and email address of the purchaser; form of payment, whether cash or check. All this will be contingent upon the approval by the Tennessee Secretary of State as presented.
Mr. Landby, do we have all of our ducks in a row?
We should. I... This group has been good in complying with our reporting requirements. So, yes.
Questions? All right. General purpose.
General Purpose Budget Amendment Fund 141. Specu... Excuse me. Special Education Educational Assistance. This amendment uses $229,574 in additional state flow-through funds for IDEA students in order to fund seven additional educational assistance for high-need students. These funds must be budgeted as part of this year's special education expenditures.
Next thing would be our policies.
All right. New and revised policies. Policy 1.701, School District Planning. Purpose of the revision: The State Board recommends updating this policy to align with changes to the State Board of Education Policy 2.101. Policy 3.212, District Water Testing. Purpose of the revision: Public Chapter 977 requires every Board of Education to develop a policy on reducing potential sources of lead contamination in drinking water in public schools. Policy 3.212 addresses this topic and complies with the requirements of state law. Policy 3.405, Contracted Bus Service. Purpose of the revision: Policy 3.405 has been updated to clarify the definition of a first priority bus driver. Policy 4.600, Grading System. Purpose of the revision: Policy 4.600 has been updated to include state mandated changes to the allocation of weighted points to advanced coursework. Policy 4.602, Grade Point Average and Class Rank. Grades 9 through 12. Purpose of the revision: Policy 4.602 has been updated to include state mandated changes to the allocation of weighted points to advanced coursework. Policy 4.608, Transcript Alteration. Purpose of the revision: Uh, this is a new policy prescribed by state law for all systems that are... That alter transcripts. Public Chapter 557 states that transcripts may only be altered by the LEA employee if there is a policy governing student transcript alterations. Policy 5.106, Application of Employment. Purpose of the revision: Policy 5.106 has been updated to include information regarding checking with the Department of Children's Services and the state's vulnerable persons registry to these policies to highlight the district's responsibility in this area. Policy 5.118, Background Investigations. Purpose of the revision: Policy 5.118 has been updated to comply with state law mandated employees submit to background check every five years. Policy 5.203, Recommendation and File Transfers. Purpose of the revision: Public Chapter 938 prohibits districts from entering into a non-disclosure agreement with existing or former employee accused of any act of sexual misconduct, i.e. sexual harassment, sexual assault. TSBA recommends updating 5.203 to highlight this prohibition. Policy 5.302, Sick Leave. Purpose of the revision: Policy 5.302 has been updated to comply with the state law changes to maternity-paternity leave and to reflect the sick leave documentation procedure recommended by Human Resources in the spring of 2018. Policy 5.305, Family and Medical Leave Act. Purpose of the revision: Previously stated law limited the amount of sick leave employees could use during maternity and paternity leave. Public Chapter 907 removes that limitation and allows employees to use paid leave, sick or annual, toward maternity or paternity leave. Policy 5.305 has been updated to reflect this language. Policy 6.200, Attendance. Purpose of this revision: Due to the changes in the State Board of Education Policy 4.100, the excused absence list in Policy 6.200 has been modified. Policy 6.200 has been updated to align with this new requirement. Policy 6.309, Zero Tolerance Offenses. Purpose of this revision: Policy 6.309 has been updated to include a new zero tolerance offense. Public Chapter 958 adds assault that results in bodily injury to the list of zero tolerance offenses. I will add, this is talking about school personnel. Policy 6.313, Disminution Procedures. Purpose of the revision: Policy 6.313 has been updated to include new zero tolerance offense. Public Chapter 958 adds assault that results in bodily injury to the list of zero tolerance offenses. Policy 6.314, Corporal Punishment. Purpose of this revision: Public Chapter 900 adds requirements regarding administering corporal punishment to students with disabilities. Policy 6.314 has been updated to comply with these requirements.
Okay. That'll be on second reading tomorrow night. I'm sure you're happy about that. Okay. Insurance update. Thank you. Directors update.
Give us a couple of things. You know, we have some great programs that are within our school district, and one of them being JRRTC. This is a couple, uh... This is some information, some bullet points from this last year, uh, from the graduating senior class, and it reads as follows. The graduating senior class of JRRTC throughout the, uh, District of Rutherford County last year had an ACT composite average of 22.37, a GP average of 3.17, a graduation rate of 100%, and scholarship monies in the... In the following. First of all, Military Academy, one was appointed to West Point. There were five ROTC scholarships awarded. There were various college scholarships awarded, approximately 92 of those. There were vocational schools, uh, money, uh, awarded for 10. There were 33 of our graduates that went on to military enlistment, and 16 went on to employment. This year, uh, the 18-19 year, with the opening enrollment as of the 30th of August, were 1,225 total. Second thing. Just a reminder that our rezoning meeting will be on November the 8th at Segal High School, beginning at, uh, 6:30, and then on November the 12th, we'll be at Blackman High School, beginning at 5:30 with a town hall talk meeting.
Okay. It's pretty impressive with ROTC.
It was impressive.
Okay. Ms. Moore, Tennessee Legislature Lady?
Uh, no report this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hodge.
I'll, uh, try to get something tomorrow night.
Thank you, sir. General discussion by board members. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Are we open for general discussion?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, and this is actually pertinent to the agenda. I have a question about the facilities use, um, schedule that we're going to be approving, I guess, at tomorrow night's meeting. Um, and I am on, I don't know if everybody's... If you get it pulled up or not, it's, of course, in the addendums. Um, and I know there's been so much conversation in the past about facilities use and who gets charged and who doesn't, and how much is charged, and so on. Um, I am curious about one thing because there is something on here. Well, first of all, uh, says pursuant to Board Policy 3.206, public education schools, institutions, post-secondary education, private universities, entities or agencies that provide benefits to the Rutherford County school system or have an in-con relationship, approved by the Director of Schools, may request the Board of Education to allow an exemption from facilities fees. Um, so the reason I bring this up and I'm asking because I am actually familiar with, and if you'll look at the very top of the program, they're the Last Cassus Elementary, the Child Evangelism Fellowship of Middle Tennessee. Um, they want to hold their Good News Club at Last Cassus Elementary once a week. And I guess I'm... I... My understanding of that program is, is that it is essentially an after-school program that's provided to children of that school whose parents would like for them to attend it. So, you know, I kind of equate that in my mind back when my kids were in school and, you know, had the extended school program at the city schools, that some of these clubs would come in, or people would come in and host a... An after-school program. But it actually was an opportunity for kids at that school to have, really, a place to go to after school. So, I had thought that that was going to be on here for an exemption like we do with our Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts meetings and so on. So, I'd just like to understand that a little better.
Ms. Bush?
Thank you. So, we do, um... We do charge churches and other similar entities a fee when they do use our buildings. So, that's what this was grouped under. Uh, now, the fee waivers are, uh, subject to approval at the discretion of the principal and the director of schools. Um, so if that was something we wanted to go back and talk to, the Child Evangelism group, they would have to submit that separate fee waiver to the school to be approved, um, together with their... With their application for...
Okay. I thought they had already done that, but this is not a church, per se. It's actually an after-school program that's made available on a volunteer basis for our children to attend. So, to me, it does fit under that category of being a service to the schools. That makes sense?
Mm-hmm. I don't know that they submitted, and I have their application right here. I don't know that they submitted a waiver, but we can go back and speak with the Good News Club and approve, and then we work out the payment system. No, they did not submit a waiver.
They did not. Okay. Okay.
No.
I thought that they had. Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Okay. I'm sure that, uh, most of y'all, like myself, have received a lot of emails in the last week or so. So, I ask, uh, for clarification from Dr. Martin on our high school requirements to come up and show us, and this happens to contain to, uh, Blackman Collegiate Academy, which I'll have to say, they've done a fine job with. What we're looking at is, uh, Dr. Martin's gonna have a handout here that's gonna explain to you the courses in the academy and what we're gonna be offering at the other schools. Now, as far as courses, uh... Well, go ahead. Explain that.
So, the first two pages that I have in your handout, you will see the general high school graduation requirements for all students in Rutherford County. This is dictated through us, through our state policy, which, um, requires students to have 22 hours. In Rutherford County, we have added one additional hour that would be, um, an elective, an extra elective. So, we do require all of our students to have 23 credits for graduation. Um, that first page explains to you, um, what that looks like, those... How those 23 credits are defined and those requirements. You will see on the second page what our requirements are for any Valley Victorian or Salute Victorians, and also our graduation with distinction, and how that is designed, um, defined. Again, that is defined to us through state policy, which we follow with our local policy. On the last page, you will see the Blackman Collegiate Academy and their components, um, for that program. Um, and you will see a correlation. Um, I've highlighted for you the... In yellow, those are course requirements. Um, but you'll also notice on page one, those are course requirements for any student in Rutherford County. Um, you'll also notice that they have the 12 credits of honors, AP and/or dual enrollment classes. That's also one of our requirements for any of our students that may be trying to qualify for a Valley Victorian status or graduating with distinction. So, you can see how all of that correlates with Blackman Collegiate Academy with our requirements for all students in high schools in Rutherford County.
Any questions for Dr. Martin?
So, the capstone and the principal project.
The senior capstone and Dr. Justice, if she wants to chime in with that. That is an extra requirement that they have that goes along with their, um, BCA and that degree, that diploma that they give them. Would you like to...
Their specific course of study. We call it their major. It's their focus area. And the students have to do a research paper, a research project that expands out to the community and involves leadership. And then they also present that, uh, research to a faculty panel, um, as a defense of their research. So, it's a very high caliber, uh, capstone course. Um, there's also another requirement, and I believe it's in our... In our work there, that our students must also take, um, a half-credit in critical thinking, which is a course that we wrote. It's a special course, and it's a fabulous course on the techniques and strategies of critical thinking, or speech. So, either a half-credit of speech or a half-credit of critical thinking, plus the half-credit of capstone. So, they do take one full extra credit over above what the county requires in the program.
So, then it's my understanding that they put it through that at Rockville? It's not?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not only at Rockville?
And they do have, there are some things I want to be very transparent. With dual enrollment, US history, that would be something that the principal at Rockville would form an AMLE with a college or university of their choice to set up a class like that. Those dual enrollment classes. But capstones, those are offered at other classes as well. We have AP capstone. Those are offered at other high schools. You'll notice that we have 23 total required credits. Most of our high schools are on seven-period days, um, and so they have enough room for 28 credits during their four years. So, they have, um, the 23 required, and then they have wiggle room for others to explore as well.
Any other question?
I do have a question. When, uh... When, uh, Rockville High opens, is it possible for it to open with an academy similar to this? You mentioned it, uh, being up to the principal to work with a school, a university. Is it possible to have that process done beforehand so that the students can start immediately? Or is there a long process to that?
This could... Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This could open with Rockville.
I will say, we anticipate, we've gone through the first round of, um, interviews for the principal of Rockville High School. I have three names that I'll be calling in tomorrow. Uh, I hope to name the principal of Rockville by the end of this week.
Go ahead.
Well, just to clarify, um, I think I'm in the slow group this evening. I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure. Um, the requirements, as far as the course requirements for the Blackman Collegiate Academy, if I'm understanding this correctly, this presentation indicates that all of those courses themselves will certainly be available at the new high school, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But not necessarily these other criteria that the Collegiate Academy requires for graduation?
Such as?
Uh, for instance, the life experience, and again, the capstone project.
I mean, I'll let you speak.
But what you're saying is, we can certainly put something into place, and that that would be...
Absolutely.
...intent to have the new principal look at options for some sort of excelling program, whether it's IB or, you know, Collegiate Academy, or...
Right. That's correct.
The new one we've got down in Smyrna. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Ms. Pilgrim, be here. If any of you have never been to their, uh, capstone project and seen it, it's... It's really worth going to see. And they do a fantastic job. Uh, I think I've been to three of them, and I'm always amazed. Of course, I'm easily amazed, but, uh... They do... Blackman has done a fine job with that program. Uh, Ms. Pilgrim is gonna tell us about the CTE classes? Or... Well...
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, in front of you, you have a list of the current Career and Tech Ed programs that we are going to offer at Rockville. Um, the Advanced Manufacturing Cluster, we're gonna have Machining Technology. The Agriculture, Food and National Resource... Natural Resources, we're gonna have Horticulture Science Program of Study. Under the Architecture and Construction, we're gonna have Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing Systems. Under the Arts, Audiovisual Technology and Communications, we're gonna have Digital Arts and Design, which is our Graphic Arts Program. Under Business Management and Administration, we are gonna have the Business Management Program of Study. Under the Education and Training, we're gonna have Teaching as a Profession Program of Study, and that's K-12. Um, Health Science, we're gonna have a Nursing Services Program, or like the therapeutic, medical therapeutic, and Emergency Services. So, we will have a... An ambulance simulator in... In our classroom, which is gonna be really cool. Hospitality and Tourism, we're gonna have Culinary Arts Program. Law, Public Safety, Corrections and Security, we're gonna have Criminal Justice and Correction Services Program of Study. Also, we're gonna have Information Technology, where we have Networking Systems Program of Study. And then, under Marketing, Distribution, and Logistics, we're gonna have Marketing Management Program of Study and Supply Chain. So, the... Of our 15 clusters that we have, there will be 11 at Rockville. And so, um, that's what we're gonna offer.
Can you, uh... Can you tell me, has there been any conversation over any, uh, early post-secondary opportunities in any of these programs of studies? Either certification, articulation with some post-secondary?
Yes, sir. So, in our Machining Technology, it's gonna be the tool and die, and we're working with TCAT, uh, Shell... TCAT Murfreesboro right now to get that set up to where there will be a... An early post-secondary opportunity, like a dual credit, um, and possibly even a dual enrollment in their, um, junior, senior years, once we get to that point. Um, and then, we... It is our goal in all of our programs of study to have a post-secondary training of some sort. And so, you know, in our Architecture and Construction, you know, the Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing, it will be the HVAC, and there are certifications in that. And then, in the, um, Education and Training, we're working with Dual Enrollment Opportunities, that Matlo and MTSU. And Health Science, that they'll be able to get their C... CMA, which is a Certified Medical Assistant, Industry Certification. And then, for our Emergency Services, they're gonna be able to, um... We're gonna work with the Rutherford County EMS to help us with that program and the certifications there. Um, Culinary Arts will be able... They will have the opportunity to, um, set for the Serve Safe Manager, Industry Certification, which walking in any restaurant, they know exactly what that means, and they want those people. Uh, Information Technology, they'll be able to do their A+ Net+, Security Plus, Industry Certifications. Law, Public Safety. We are actually working with, um, our post-secondary partners to see if we can get a dual-credit opportunity, at least with Criminal Justice. But there's also an Industry Certification that the state is looking at for us to be able to add to our Criminal Justice, um, students. And then... And then, for the supply chain management, there is a, um, supply chain technician, uh, logistics technician that we have, so we definitely have opportunities to, um, have these programs have a post-secondary something, so we're already working on that, so as the students come in, we'll already have a lot of this already set.
On this number ten here, you, you know, you mentioned law and public safety corrections and security, are, is this all, we're talking about staffing in terms of, of, you know, law enforcement, or are we talking about cybersecurity? What do we?
Well, it can kind of be both, because, you know, in criminal justice, in this law and public safety, there is a pre-law prom, program of study, and then there's this criminal justice and correction services program of study. And so, in the programs, it, it does, you know, the first class talks about all of the things that you could do in law enforcement, so it's that foundational course of which way do you want to go, and so with our information technology being, you know, such a prevalent thing in this high school as well, you know, the cybersecurity piece of this, you know, I, I foresee them working together on, um, things that they can do to, you know, make the students become aware of what they can do even in the cyber world.
Any other questions?
Very exciting.
According to this, the, we may not have a same thing in the program, but they have something that they can go into, that's in the same thing as what they are even doing?
I believe so. I mean, there are a lot of offerings here. Now, there, if, it just depends on where they're coming from, because we don't have, like, at Rockvale, we're not gonna have cosmetology, so if they come from Oakland, uh, I don't know how those own shifts or anything, but if they come to, um, from a school that they don't have a program, we will fit them in where it is most logical to put them, so it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, to where we're not just gonna throw a kid in somewhere that doesn't make sense, so we're gonna, you know, these are, this is a lot of offerings that we are gonna have, and so we're gonna do our best to make sure that, you know, their needs are definitely taken care of.
Is there an exception, should one or two or five of them absolutely not qualify, be able to call them these activities?
I don't know if I'm sure what you're asking, like?
Hardship, uh, sports that are.
Okay, so, um, we do every once in a, okay, so, um, we do every once in a while, that may have had two years in one program of study, and they move to another school, and they don't have that program of study. So, what the state will let us do on that is, again, we can put them into something that is similar. The marketing business is where some of that happens, because if you're gonna be, you know, a doctor or whatever, you gotta be able to market yourself, so, so we can kind of make some of those correlations, and so that we do fill out, or I fill out a hardship form, to where I send it to the state, to where they can approve that the student's third credit in that focus would be approved, and then they keep it on file, and we keep it on file, so that we'll know that the student completed their focus. So, that is in place, and we do that even now.
Is it on? It's on. It's on. It's on.
We can put it on our webpage. Yeah, let me ask you this, and I think I'm, uh, about ninety-nine point nine percent of your, uh, course studies, programs of studies, start their sophomore year?
Freshmen. We, we, there's a.
Did they start their freshman year?
One or two schools that, that, I think one school in particular that don't let freshmen, but everyone else normally lets freshmen, and sometimes in culinary.
Right.
They start as sophomores because of all the dangerous, the heat and.
Uh-huh. And they end up with how many, uh, courses of study?
Three.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's possibility, I mean, what I'm trying to get at here is, if I come in as a sophomore, then I can still get in a, a course of study?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely. You could just pick a different one.
Right.
And then they could have the three, and sometimes, in some cases, we've even had juniors do that, where they've chosen another one, and they, because like Dr. Martin said, they have some wiggle room to where they could take that foundation course as a junior if they had to, and then as a senior, maybe take the second and third one. But again, it's kind of a case-by-case basis that we look at, because it's very important that they stay in the sequins, so whenever they do take those post-secondary, um, industry certifications or things like that, they're prepared to be able to do that, because if they hop around, they're not, they're not prepared to pass those industry certifications.
Ms. Pilgrim, I don't mean to keep asking you questions, but would it be fair to say that you work very hand, hand, hand-to-hand with the, the Chamber of Commerce and the industry leaders?
Yes, sir.
Would it be fair to say that if we hire this principal, that we can get this principal in on some of those meetings, that, where you're working with industry?
Most certainly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like a meeting with whoever that is, like, as soon as we know who it is, I'm gonna call them up, just set a meeting, so we can talk about this. Is that's okay?
Sure.
First of all, before I ask my question, I just want to say thank you again for all you and your department do. Our C T E programs are absolutely, um, a standard, not just for the state, but I think for the entire country, so very, very proud of this, and.
Thank you.
Excited for what you're doing. And just out of curiosity, I know you mentioned we have, like, was it fifteen total programs across the, the school system, so can you specifically tell me, I'm just curious, which of the programs we can't offer, or we won't be able to offer at Rockvale?
Um, the U S Department of Education gives us sixteen program, sixteen clusters that we have to choose from.
Okay.
So, the State Department chose, said this is what we're gonna do, so we, they offer the sixteen. So, in Rutherford County, we do not have the government, public administration, or we may have a class in that, but not a full program, so I can't say that we have that program of study, so that is one of them. Of the fifteen, um, okay, so I'm gonna go down the list.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. We, um, finance, we are not, because we can put some of those classes in business management, some of the same classes, so finance is one of them. Mechatronics, is that? That's advanced manufacturing, so we'll have that at the top, that's the machining that we're gonna do up there. Um, transportation, STEM, like, 'cause there, the information technology is STEM, is in the STEM field, and so is advanced manufacturing, so it is, those are STEM, it's just not the word, the program STEM is separate. So, that's three, right? And then human services. Human services, STEM, transportation, there's one more. Finance, yes.
Yeah, you got that. That's fine.
I think that's it.
Thank you answered for me. Thank you.
Yeah. We have the rest, so, but, yes, thank you for, I normally have them memorized, but right now, I'm just like, on the spot, so, but, thank you.
Any other question? Ms. Spurlock, I did ask Ms. Pilgrim to make, uh, for next Thursday night, some, uh, posters with those on them, and maybe we can get it put on the screen, too, before the meeting starts, uh, so everybody can see those. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Pilgrim. Thank you, Dr. Martin. Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to ask Dr. Justice a couple of questions on the, on the turf field. Um, Dr. Justice, the other night, we were at your school, and by the way, y'all did a great job of hosting that meeting, my congratulations on that for sure. I talked with your, um, sister principal there, Mr. Lawless, who's right down the row from you there, and he said that the turf, you're expecting to put the turf down, uh, perhaps before the first of the year, get started on it, is that, is that, is that pretty much the plan?
Next step for us is to, um, providing, we accept the bid tomorrow night, um, is to give, uh, the, the intent to build the, I can't remember what it's called, Mr. Lee, um, along with the, the drawings, and how we plan to finance it, and I believe that has to be brought before the board.
Right.
So, we're ready, and, um, to do that, so we'll get that on the agenda as soon as we know that the bid is accepted.
You gave us a lot of, of material that, um, back a few, I don't know, months ago now, I guess it was, uh, when you were planning on doing it right before the year, the, during the summer, and that didn't, that didn't work for a whole bunch of reasons, it was just too, timing was just too tight on that, but you mentioned in there about, about naming the field, and, and I, I was just wondering, have you, have you done anything, or, and I'm not really saying that you should, in one way or another, I'm just asking, a number of schools will name the field, they'll also name the stadium, that they will, they will name the individual rooms in the press box, even the concession stand, after different sponsors. There was no sponsor that wanted to name the field, or, or, or anything like that, or was there any effort made to do that?
Uh, yeah. Yeah. Primary sponsors who will, um, who would like to name, have the field name after, um, that person, who you guys will do tomorrow night. Um, there's space for another field sponsor, would you like to?
I'd like to do a lot of things.
I'll extract you a check before we leave here.
I'm still actively seeking, um, sponsors, because as Mr. Dandy goes, you wanna get more, way more commitments than the field costs, to feel comfortable.
Well, that was my next and last question, 'cause you, you had a number of sponsors listed, I believe, I don't know if you named them by name, but you did have the amounts there that they'd invested in this, and, um, you're in pretty good shape with, with this, going into this, 'cause you can't build it without it.
We're, we're in good shape, and we've also, um, uh, talked about, we, we're in good shape with financing as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Your personal guarantee.
Well, mine.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Justice. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Anybody else? Okay, remember tomorrow night's four thirty? Okay. No other questions? We'll be adjourned.